With that stated, I'm gonna go ahead and ask if you'll join me on the pledge of allegiance, and then Mr. Covert will give our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you tonight asking for wisdom as we make decisions for our city. Lord, we ask that you be with the leaders of our country, the leaders of our city, Lord, and more than all, we ask that you save the lost. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Our chairman, Kevin Parsley, was not able to be here tonight, had an emergency in the family. And so, my name is Brian Powell, and I'm the vice chairman, and we'll be conducting this meeting tonight. So, I call this to order. Any roll call, please?
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
Livy Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley. Aaron Panado.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Dale Towler.
Here.
Approval of the minutes?
Minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Roll call. Are all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, by like sign. The minutes have been approved. We'll start off with our tabled items. We'll go to R-18-31, Mark Girth, Girth Properties LLC, 571 Oak Grove Road, from A1 to C2, presented by DCI. If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Leslie Tabor. I work with DCI.
We'll let down a little bit.
Thank you.
No problem. My name is Leslie Tabor. I work with DCI, representing Mark Girth and his rezon. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Staff comments?
So, with this rezon, the, basically, it's on the west side of town, near Elm Springs. There's a couple residential uses to the north and the south, as you can see on the map. Of note, the comprehensive land use plan, this place was annexed in not too long ago with the city. And so, it's a small, weird section where there's Elm Springs side on the road. And so, there's actually not a comprehensive land use portion for that, because we haven't updated the plan this year yet. Also, that quarter typically, all the way down the east side, is a commercial land use plan. So, it's one large block of commercial land use. The proposal is a C2 commercial. And staff ultimately recommends approval of this, because in keeping with the ideals of the city with rezonings.
Anybody in the audience have anything to state on this? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Ms. Haney. Roll call.
Covert, Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Howler.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Do you have anything else? Thank you. Our next item will be W-18-23, Lewis and Shannon Froud for metal roof cells, 2871 and 2919 East Robinson. This will be a waiver for sidewalk requirements presented by Bates and Associates. Just state your name and address, please, sir.
Brian Robertson, 21 West Oak Drive, Cabot, Arkansas.
You have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, sir. What we're doing is asking for a fee in lieu of, for the sidewalk. It doesn't lead anywhere right now. I mean, it's probably six blocks away. And then, we own the property adjacent to it, and then we will be able to put sidewalks that go back to a residential area. But it's gonna be rather expensive. I can pass the detail around to actually try to put this sidewalk in.
Austin, can you go to the next few slides there? As you can see, we had, the history on this is, last planning commission, there was a discussion surrounding the waiver and how the sidewalk is gonna fit into the property. And basically, after our engineers took a look at it, the height in the front of the property was quite a bit higher than when it transitioned to the back. So, we had a four or five-foot drop. And so, basically, the consultants came to us and asked, just as he's proposing here, if we would do a payment in lieu of. We asked for an estimate. The estimate came back at $4 per square foot. And we ran that by our engineering staff, and they said that with costs associated and everything was acceptable, considering the hardship of construction with the change in height. So, basically, if they did the sidewalk the way it was, it would be proposed on the site plan, you would have a drop-off from the adjacent property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, staff comments is payment in lieu of, and you're good with payment in lieu of?
Yes, sir.
Anybody having, the audience have anything to say about this? It's to the commission. This will be a call.
So, a call for the vote to accept the payment in lieu of?
Yes. So, we have a call for the vote. Roll call.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions on that with staff, you can get with us afterwards or tomorrow, and we'll see what's remaining on your project for moving forward.
Our next item on the agenda is B-18-36, Cox Development LLC, 2223 Presley Lane, variance for deviation of driveway incline, presented by Kent Cox.
Yes, I'm Kent Cox. My address is 17973 North Skylight Mountain Road, Kane Hill, Arkansas. The last we'd spoken, we gathered up more information. You were wanting to know exactly what the grade was, so we went out and we shot it. It is a 27% grade. So, our variance that we're asking for is 27%.
Staff.
One thing I didn't, till last week, or last time also, was there was a finished floor elevation on this piece of property that put our garage at a certain height. And so, we did do that. I didn't mention that last week, because I forgot about it, or the last time we had met. So, I did have it shot at the time we poured the pad, and I held that finished floor elevation of the garage at that exact height. So...
So, staff comments?
Basically, what you're asking for is a 7% deviation from the grade requirement in the ordinance, I think.
Is that your comment? Anybody in the audience want to address this issue? It's to the commission. Is Mike here tonight?
No, I'm here for Mike.
Okay.
I'm Tom Evers with the Buildings Department. My understanding is most of you never heard of me, but I have been here for a while. On this here, and I'm glad, I wanted Kent to talk first, because that did come to light, that he actually does, he does have a finished floor elevation, so he has to meet a certain height level. Otherwise, the house is not gonna pass, because it doesn't meet the flood area. You'd have to have flood insurance. Even if his garage was lowered, you know, to meet this 20% deal, then yeah, he could put a neat feature in there, so he could have water that flows through his garage. And that is actually an option a person does have, but who's gonna want a house that has water flowing through their garage? So, I'm not a big fan of variances, normally not. Kent Cox has built 20, 30 homes in our town. I think this is the first time he's ever asked for a variance. And I think this is a situation that probably does require a variance. Normally, variances are supposed to be something that was caused kind of by the city, is my understanding, for the 17 years I've been here. This ordinance has been in effect less than this property had been accepted into the city. So, we adopted this ordinance to put it in effect, because we were having some steep driveways. But again, with this finished floor elevation, the fact that we accepted this property in before the ordinance came in, we are gonna have a few, and I brought the plat to show you, there's probably two or three more in here, that the only way you're ever gonna put a house on it is you're gonna have to have a variance. It's only a way. So...
Or build it with the flood.
And would you buy a house with water flowing through the garage?
I know several people who have built garages that way, so...
And I certainly wouldn't buy a house like that, but...
But people do it.
Go ahead.
The finished floor elevation on it, it's built on a hill, so...
It is a very amazing thing. I mean, I've learned a lot about that. I'm a licensed builder in the state of Arkansas as well. And it's crazy, if you've been out there to see this property, and I'm sure most of you have, his house is the tallest house in the neighborhood.
Austin, can you switch the picture, please?
Okay. And then, it's like right next to him, that's not his, I don't believe. Is that it? Okay. Well, his house, I mean, if you were to bring this over to the next house, his garage floor is probably midway up the roof of the next house. But that house doesn't have a finished floor elevation. If that house floods, most of us in northwest Arkansas are gonna be underwater. Why is it that way? It's because there's a drainage utility easement that runs behind his house. And because of that, that's why his lot and the three lots that go around this way all have to have a finished floor elevation. Houses that are below him don't have to have it. And I've got that right here. I knew you might wanna see that.
Can we just get on the record what finished floor elevation means, for those of us that don't know?
It's the, the finished floor elevation is like where the slab of the house is with the materials and everything, when you walk in, like to the door, with the actual, you know, where you're walking on when you come into the house. And that, that's what he's talking about when he means finished floor elevation. So, when you walk into the threshold of the house, usually, they have certain points that they hit, and they call that the finished floor. And it has to be shot by a licensed landscape, or not, a land surveyor, and submitted to the Buildings Department, or engineering actually gets a copy of them as well, with just about any house.
Absolutely.
With the plat.
And you can see, there's, I mean, most of these last two cul-de-sacs were full of them. And it could be anything from a drainage utility easement, which he's got behind him, and that's what's causing these to be so steep, you know?
So, can I ask, as far as timeline, because I know with, you know, when we do like large scale, they do all the engineering and all that's up front. It goes through, lots of people look at it. What's the difference between, with like a residential house?
Well, how we do it now, I mean, as far as the finished floor elevation, before he's allowed to pour his slab, he has to have it sent over to engineering now. He used to just come to our office, and they say, okay, this is the, you know, as-built today's standing of this. And then, before he's issued a C of O, he has to provide a second one that goes through engineering that says he indeed did build it, to where he said he would build it. So, he's stuck in the middle. He has to meet that finished floor elevation. Otherwise, you get into flood insurances, you get into all kinds of other issues. You know, if he brings it down six feet or eight feet, or whatever, you have to bring that down to meet the slope of the driveway, then you gotta worry about, are you gonna start getting into the water line, the sewer line? And then, how are you gonna rectify that?
At what point do we look at the elevation of the driveway?
Honestly, we don't. And we're gonna change some things, which is really gonna make me a popular person. And if you hadn't heard of me then, you'll hear of me, you'll definitely hear about me in the future. I have always, since this ordinance came into effect, at least 10 years ago this ordinance has been in effect, whenever they come in and they get a permit, I always write, like in this case, it was an older subdivision, permitted before August of '08, I'd put in here driveway not to exceed 20%. Anything that's newer than that is not to exceed 15%. Now, Mr. Cox and I have worked well together, and I'm gonna clear up one thing that I heard about last meeting. And he'll, he can attest to it, or he cannot. He was never told he was gonna get a variance. I tell this to everybody. I don't care if it's the flattest lot in town. I just go ahead and write it, 15, 20%, just because I've gotten used to it over the last 10, 12 years. If he wants to try to get a variance from day one, which I would suggest, because it's better, that way, if they say you can't build it, you can't build it. If he wants to take the chance to get it at a later date, that's what he takes, you know? But he was never, me or any of the guys out there, all we ever do is say, you can always try to get a variance, because that is the protocol, the way we do things.
What is the, what happens if we don't, if the planning commission doesn't grant him a variance?
Well, I mean, for us, we can't issue him a C of O, because we want to be in compliance with our ordinance. You know, then obviously, for his, what he can do, I guess, is a legal standpoint. I'm not an attorney, but I understand that he could take it to a legal standpoint to go against your ruling.
No, I meant from a building inspection standpoint.
We just won't give him a C of O.
Okay.
So... And this is what we've proposed for the future, is I can arbitrarily turn every one of them down. As soon as he brings his next one in, and it's a flat lot, I'm gonna tell him he has to provide me some sort of an engineering thing, saying this will not exceed 15 or 20% before he do anything. Another thought was, we'd let him at least dig the footing, and then, once my guy went out there and said, looks like it's gonna be too steep, stop him there. But where do you want me to stop him? I mean, he would like to be stopped before he bought the property, because he was unaware of that. True, I agree, it's buyer beware, but that's why I write these things down. I try to tell them as soon as, I don't know who bought the lot until they come get a permit. That's the first time I can impart what our ordinance is saying, how he chooses to deal with it. Yeah, it falls back on him. But at this stage of the game, what are we gonna do? We wanna leave an empty lot, or do we wanna have him tear down the house?
So, when was the subdivision platted?
I believe it's '04.
So, if it's, the ordinance requirement is if it's prior to 2014, and a platted subdivision, the variance is 20%?
No, prior to 2000, August of 2008, it's a 20% slope. After 2008, everything is supposed to be on a 15% slope.
For a platted subdivision, if it's in a platted subdivision?
Well, I mean, you say platted. I mean, I do it on anything. If they're building out in the county, I tell them don't have it more than 14% or 15%.
So, when this was first brought up, this gentleman was notified?
Yeah.
Okay. And at the time, I just wanna restate it again, was he informed that he would have to get a variance at some time?
I don't know that, at that point, he wasn't informed by me. Now, our staff is a great staff, that every little scribble I can put on that note, and I trust you at scribbles, they will put it on the notes, so that he can read it, that he signs the day one, and it'll say... Like at the top of here, it talks about no more than a 20% slope. So, he knows about it from day one, when he picked this permit up. Again, if you're not familiar with this, or you're not familiar with the finished floor elevation, it throws them, and they'll call me on a finished floor elevation, they want their slab, and I say, no, we can't give you a slab, because you have to do these other protocols first.
Then I would assume by building 20-plus homes in the area, he'd be familiar with that, would he not?
No, because he's built places where they didn't have finished floor elevations or sloping issues. He's built on Chelsea, and he's built on, I can't remember the name of the street over there, by George Elementary. Those houses were very, I mean, those are lucky, if they're, they're probably dead flat, you know, driveways, and they didn't have finished floor elevations over there. He may have had some finished floor, but I don't even know if he did. There was a drainage utility over there.
My problem is, he went ahead and built the driveway without getting a variance. Not, and he's gonna have to deal with the problem of waiting till after you put the stuff in to get a variance. And we're gonna set a precedence on, and other people do this too. They're gonna come up to us and say, oh, well, he got a variance after he put this in, why shouldn't we get one too?
This, this is not the first time that we've had someone come before us.
Absolutely.
And we have turned them down for far less, far less than this.
And when he was told, he's told that it's not a guarantee he'll get a variance. He's told that, you know?
When you look, because for me, when this happened in the past, I started doing research, and a lot of places throughout the country, 10 to 12% is a maximum. Going over, um, when you go over a certain percentage, 15 to 20%. In places that allowed 15 to 20% required scored concrete, 27% I couldn't find allowances for. And then, a question came up from, in discussing with, you know, what my research was, you know, what do the people around us do? And I'm seeing Fayetteville is 14%. Rogers, 8%, unless approved by the city. Bentonville, on a local street, 10%. So, we are already far over. For me, there's a safety issue. Somebody is gonna get hurt if a car lets go. And the ability to come down a driveway that is that steep, it's difficult to walk up that driveway. So, I would anticipate probably people getting hurt going up and down the driveway, wa- walking, much less...
In rain or snow, I mean, you probably couldn't argue that.
Much less a neighborhood where you've got a school and children that are gonna be walking in that neighborhood. And, you know, I just...
And you've been, you've mentioned Fayetteville. I mean, people have parked on Leverett Street, people have parked on North Street, that are far greater slopes than this. So, I mean, we're, the streets are allowed to be, are steeper than this. The park that goes to this little place called Biore Park, I argue is a steeper roadway than this driveway is. I was just over there before I came here. So, I mean, and you could park on that street?
You're gonna ask someone to go up into their garage, if they can even get in, because they may bottom out coming in and out.
And I'm not arguing that.
And the other is backing out.
Absolutely. This came about because of Mountain View, where they built those duplexes many years ago. I went through there again today too, and people hardly ever use those driveways. The ones that are in the very northeast corner are pretty treacherous to try to go up. And like I said, rain and snow, it would be impossible not to cause a problem. Again, when this came to light, this needs to be stopped at planning. We shouldn't accept a subdivision in that has this, and I, my office doesn't have that ability. All my office has the ability to do is to inform them, once they come in and get a permit. And that's what we've done since this ordinance has come into effect. And then, my next one is gonna make people like this, or different developers, when I turn them down flat from day one, and say, get me something that says, and that'll be great, and we'll do it. It don't bother me, you know? I've got some people will tell you, I'm not afraid to start these, because they can wait six weeks and provide me the information, and they can start their construction. I got no problem doing that, and that's what we're leaning towards. Because I've come here on my own tonight to talk, because if we're gonna give variances, and I'm not a fan of variances, I've been here for 17 years, and I've written up people to have sidewalks, and you write them up, and then you, out in the field, you get yelled at, why do I have to have a sidewalk? How stupid. There's no sidewalks over here. People would come to a committee like this, long before some of you served, and they get a sidewalk. And then, it's kinda like, hey, you didn't get a sidewalk. I mean, it's the same difference. We're just imparting to him what the variance says. If you guys don't wanna give him a variance, I have no problem.
Correct, and...
But we, but again, the variance says that we would, we would, he would be eligible for a variance if it was something that the city created. Remember, this ordinance came in after the subdivision came in. We caused this ordinance to be in conflict with a developer. Maybe the developer could have shaved those lots down even further, and then, the utilities could be put down a little deeper, that would have prevented this. But we can't go back to 2003, when the subdivision was being built, and change that. So, we, in effect, have kind of created this issue.
Well, it's very difficult for this body to have to make a decision on this. We got a fully-built house out there, and it's, it's very difficult to do that. But we, you've heard the precedence word. We can't set precedence on this. And Mr. Cox knew beforehand, and I truly believe he knows, and you've told me that he knows. And there's other things that could have been done. And I'm not gonna say the Planning Department had, didn't have enough oversight on it, because I believe they did. Someone to put a subdivision there, that's fine. They're taking the legalities about that. We're just saying, yeah, everything meets the minimum requirements, and they can put a subdivision in. So, but it is very difficult for this body to have to, have to have, to make these kind of decisions on this kind of stuff. And so, I think we need to set a precedence, not only for just us, but for whoever comes in behind us, and for what's the betterment for the city.
And the next thing that I would say is that this is, this to me is a clear situation where there were other options, because there were three lots at least out there that were vacant. So, it may be that those lots were not buildable lots, as single lots, but perhaps you make a bigger lot with a driveway that curved in, flat at the bottom, curve up, and flatten up at the top.
Yeah, and it just depends on who's willing to sell those lots. I don't know who owns those lots.
Well, and that may be, and that's, that's, around the whole country can be said, that the last lots built in every subdivision are the ones that are most expensive to build on, right? When, and then you wait until...
If it's a desirable neighborhood, absolutely.
And then you wait until the price point reaches where people really wanna live in that town, and that's the only lot left, and they're willing to do what's necessary. So, so, you know, I think it's very unfortunate, and I feel for you, but it would be very difficult for me to accept that.
So, having some council people in the audience, are we, do we need to change this ordinance to 8%,?
Well, that's not something we're gonna discuss here tonight.
Yeah, I think, I think we need, yeah, that's a whole different subject that we need to talk about at a later time.
We need to concentrate on this right now.
Can I ask a question really fast? Can you tell me the grade of the driveways in Southland Terrace?
I don't know those in Southland, but I know that this one here, I'm told, was like 25.93 is what he's had been able to measure and provide to us.
Well, and just for clarification, the ordinance states the, the grade requirement has to be met from the front of the property line to the front setback. So, it's not the whole driveway. So, you do have creativity and design that you can do. It's just the front portion of the driveway. That's where the measurement is engaged, from the property line to the setback, which in this case is 30 feet per this plat. So, after the 30 feet, we are not measuring grade requirements, because the city set that safety standard for the front portion of the lot. And there are some lots that would be unrealistic too, in that if we had a short distance to do that. If I had to measure the whole driveway over the distance of a hill or something like that, yeah, we might not be able to meet that. But that's why they limited the standard to the front setback, and they said, in this portion, you have to meet this grade requirement.
So, can anyone tell me how, how much lower it would have to be to meet 20%? Do we know that number?
Couldn't you give a number of that? I thought he said somewhere between four to five feet lower.
And that puts it in a flood zone?
And then, he wouldn't meet his finished floor elevation for both his garage or his house.
And, you know, and if someone can't use that driveway, now it creates a hardship for the rest of the neighborhood, because he'll be parking in the street, however many people live there. So, it's not even just a question of if somebody's willing to take that house as is.
Yeah, but you're allowed to park in the street.
That may, that may be true, but most people have a usable driveway. And in this case, I would question even the safety of using that driveway.
Are there any other comments on this issue? If any audience, we'll give another, open it up to the audience again. If not, this will be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert. Roll call.
Haney.
No.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
I'll just say that, uh, if this was coming before us with no house there, I don't see any way that I would vote to have it at 27%. And I feel like, because there's a house there, I'm being kind of forced into, you know...
But no, we have denied one before, for a less percentage than that.
No.
No. Panado.
No.
Powell.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, six no's.
Six no's, two yeses. This variance does not pass.
So, his options will be, the right to appeal is through the circuit court? Okay, does he have a timeframe on that?
Sarah will address that.
I'm not allowed to give legal advice on that. I would just say you'd need to contact a private attorney as soon as possible.
Next item on the agenda will be L-18-30, Pro Tire and Automotive, south of Elm Springs Road, east side of North 40th, presented by Blue and Associates.
George came with Blue and Associates. The property owner is available, if you guys have any questions. Very straightforward automotive shop on 40th Street. I'm also here, if you have any questions.
Staff comments?
This one was heard initially at the last planning commission, and I think it got tabled per engineering, and...
and you all were able to work out the, what the requirements were for engineering, and we, yeah, so. And staff ultimately feels, I mean, we have a few comments left as per usual, but we tend to work those out with our developers. We don't see any glaring issues, so some of them are pretty standard. Just a few specific landscaping items. There are some sites constraints on this, where this is going in. Austin, if you wanna click over, just because the city owns a portion of the right of way right there, and then it's, the drainage is going in the front. But overall, staff feels pretty comfortable with it at this time and would recommend a, you know, an approval first off with staff comments still. Engineering still had some outstanding details as well, but they are, they have been continually working those out.
Any comments from the audience on this issue?
To the commission? So, we have several other comments that are on here that I'm seeing. Drainage issues, showing easements of our, showing easements of the detention pond. These have been addressed, or they are going to be addressed?
They're in the process with it, and when I talked with the engineering department, they felt comfortable after making that initial, you know, recommendation that now we're in a place where we can just work it out on a staff basis to meet the ordinance requirements that were remaining, so.
Is engineering here today?
We have Carl over here.
Carl coming with the engineering department. Do you have any questions?
Carl, you guys didn't have any concerns? You feel like we could work this out from a staff development standpoint like we normally do with everybody at this point?
Yeah, we're pretty good.
So, there weren't any issues on y'all's end that you saw?
No, everything else we can work it out. We're all good.
Any other comments from the commission? This'll be a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Roll call.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Benato? Bryant, Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda will be R eighteen dash thirty-four, Seal George and Sons, northeast corner of intersection of Watkins Avenue and Sixty-Fourth Street from A-one to PUD, presented by Crafton and Toll.
My name is Hugh Jarrett. I'm actually with the Lindsay Company, the developer. This is, we have a large scale coming. Also, this is a PUD. Do you want me to discuss just the use and the particulars when we come back on the law? How do y'all want me to do it?
We're just gonna, we're just gonna do the rezoning first. If we don't rezone it, then the next part's mute. So, we just gotta do the rezoning first.
If there's any questions whatsoever, I'm here to-
Okay.
Do we have Lindsay as a signed rep for this project?
I'm sorry?
Are they able to speak to this project since they're not Crafton Toll?
I'll sign the application on behalf of the applicant.
If they're in the folder, if they're, if it's there.
Crafton Toll's here.
They're, we got, we got a whole bunch of-
Angela Ellis, so it's good.
Yes, ma'am, I am here, but like I said, Hugh represents the developer on the project and probably answered the questions for a lot of them better than even I can, so.
So, are we gonna have any, anybody gonna represent? Do you have any other comments you'd like to state about this?
Yes, sir. This area, we're, we're at the intersection of Watkins and Sixty-Fourth. Both are part of the, the capital improvement program. Both roads are gonna be improved. We're donating the right of way to each. There is a lot of activity, commercial activity going in that area. We have brand-new buildings and a new plan for this area that'll interconnect trails and fit the whole area, fit that, the, the design overlay. We're excited about it. We think the city's had a lot of foresight doing this, and we think that housing is gonna be needed there. We think the use is needed. We have, you know, multifamily in this area. All of it's full. We know that there is a demand, and this area is just gonna do nothing but grow. And we think that by putting housing that people who work there will like to live in, we can actually take a lot of the traffic impact off of four twelve and some other areas where people can work adjacent to where they're living.
So, anybody in the audience have anything to add to this? Yes, sir. If you'll come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Yes, you do.
If you could go to the mic, that way we could get it recorded, Mr. McAllister. Thank you.
It's just for the record, sir.
It's for the record.
I'm Bob McAllister. I live at fifty-nine sixty Apple Road, which is across the road from this project. And all I wanted to know was, was what is a PUD? Is that public housing something, or what's PUD stand for?
Yeah, so a PUD is a planned unit development. Sometimes whenever a city has zoning guidelines that are too restrictive for certain develops to, developments to come in and develop under those zoning guidelines, they request the city to review a PUD, Planned Unit Development. And they have to prove through their development guidelines that they're gonna offset the impacts of where they're not gonna meet the zoning guidelines by creating a better district. And so, they have brought a planned unit development on behalf of Seal George and Sons to develop and to put some multifamily in this area.
So, you said exceptions. Now, are they gonna follow the guidelines that are established for that area out there?
Oh, yes, sir.
I mean, the rock and the signs?
They have to.
Yeah, so it falls in the south, the southwest overlay, and so it has to meet certain guidelines as well as if it's a multifamily project, it has to meet our multifamily design standards.
I mean, like the hospital was supposed to be bermed, and it wasn't, and, you know, some things that kinda slid through the wayside there.
I can't speak to the hospital, but I'll be gladly to talk to you about it afterwards. But, yeah, if it's a PUD, they will have a development guidelines package that is, that is more restrictive than typical zoning guidelines. And then on top of that, they have to meet their multifamily design guidelines in that area as well.
But they still have to follow the guidelines that are set up for that area.
That's correct.
The original, whatever you call that thing.
Like southwest overlay.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. If you'll come to the mic and state your name and address, please, sir, for the record.
My name is James Maxwell. I live at one zero zero six South Maestry Road, which is, if Watkins is cut through, that'll come down to my property. So, I'm just asking, the road doesn't bother me, but is, are, this gonna be apartments? Which is like over on Fortieth Street or Forty-Eighth Street? Is that what they're planning to put in, that type of apartment?
What, what we're planning is a, that's why I was asking about the plan and everything. What we're planning are market-rate apartments. It's a completely new building. We've never built it before. Every unit has a private balcony. We have interior accesses. It's completely different. It's a trails concept. We will have connectivity. It is a brand-new, brand-new building that we're doing, and it will fit within. The reason we do, we're doing the new building is so as to fit inside the southwest overlay with stone and brick, things like that. We'll have- That is way bigger than where we're actually doing it. What we're filling is the south, twenty-two acres along Watkins and- The corner there, yes. Yes.
Yeah, that's just the main parcel that's affected by it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Staff comments on this?
All right, so as stated, it is in the southwest overlay, just directly down from the ballfield. We have some, a lot of activity going on in this area. You know, Children's is recently over there. It is a rapidly developing area. There, we were approached when the, with a, with a PUD to, to allow the higher density in a unique situation to where they have very high-end amenities for apartments and multifamily in this area. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan indicates a medium-density residential, so that's why a PUD was required because those strict zoning guidelines would not have typically allowed something of this nature. And it is offset through a PUD via certain common space and, like I said, amenities. Ultimately, staff recommends this as, you know, approval of this, this PUD. We think it's a great addition to the southwest overlay and area, so.
Any other comments on the rezoning of this property to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Ms. Haney. Roll call.
Parker?
Yes.
Benato?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes eight zero. We're gonna go ahead and go to the large scale since everybody's here and this has been a concern. That way, we can get all the questions and all that taken care of. So, we're gonna go to large-scale developments. It'll be on your last page. The L eighteen dash thirty-one, Trails at Legacy PUD, northeast of intersection of Watkins Avenue and Sixty-Fourth Street, presented by Crafton and Toll. Do y'all have copies of the, the building elevations?
I did include them in the actual slideshow, so just whenever you're ready, we'll, we can go, go a little bit further. So, I got, I got a number of examples that were provided from, you know, building views and sightlines and everything, so.
Can we go to the, to the actual layout?
There it is. We have, working with city staff, Ms. Christie, and all of the craft, the staff, we have come up with a, with a new building that, I have paper handouts of the building itself. What we have done is to fit something new inside the southwest overlay, our architects went back and came up with a completely new building, which we're passing out now. There's actually two buildings, but they are set up to where the facades are articulated or different enough that no two buildings, when they're turned and put on the site plan, none of the buildings will actually look the same. I know that some of our other developments in other parts of the town can look repetitive. That, that's not gonna be what we're gonna get here. These buildings can be twisted and turned and come up with different sightlines and color patterns as you go down, as, as you're looking at the units. Every unit is going to have an interior or a private balcony. Every unit, there's a bathroom for every bedroom. We, we think that there is a need for very, for a more upscale-type use in this area. We think this is probably gonna be one of the more desirable apartments anywhere in the area, especially with the, with the new building. We went on, and also, if we could go back to the plan, the city wanted to have open recreation areas available to people, kinda scattered throughout the site. So, if you look at the, the far west end, on the left side, we have that central yard where people can get out and can, you know, exercise, walk their dog, or whatever. We also have garages that we've scattered throughout the property, so people can have a garage for their car. We have that at about ten percent of what the unit count is. The unit count we're proposing is about, is four hundred and seventy-six units. That's twenty-one point six units per acre. And again, we've spread those out and created more of a street, a streetscape along Watkins and Sixty-four. We've added a trail on the far eastern side with a, with a large green space on either side of it that people can use. And then in the central portion of the property, we have our clubhouse with our pool and all of the amenities. We kinda make a courtyard concept there where people can come out, and, and we have a pool. We have a putt-and-green, a playset for kids. We have all kinds of things there that are amenities that people can use. So, and again, we have the, either a sidewalk or a trail all the way around this thing. Inwak is gonna go right south of us. We anticipate that we'll have people that can just walk across the street there to Inwak. And we think that we will really draw a, a lot of the people who are working in this area to, to live with us. This is part of a larger regional detention area, so all of our stormwater will run north to a regional detention pond and be taken care of that way. I'm trying to think if there are any other, any other points I hadn't hit, but we know that, we know that something like this is needed. We know that there is a market. All of our apartments in this whole area are full and have been. So, this is a different take on what we've normally done, and we're, we're very excited to be a part of this area, and we think this area's gonna do very well. So, if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Staff comments on this issue?
So, staff has, as he stated, has been working on this development, trying to get through the multifamily design standards, which are, are, are a long and comprehensive, comprehensive twenty-seven-page document on that. So, the, the few items we had remaining were the lighting plan. On a project this large, I mean, a lighting plan is, is pretty substantial. And, and as well as a few other administrative details. And screening is what our multifamily design centers call for. You know, the, the mechanical equipment on the adjacent, you know, with a large multifamily project like this, there are gonna be a lot of air conditioners and a lot of utilities and stuff that are gonna be going in and out of here. And that's, that's one of the things that the city set forth is to have, you know, in their comprehensive design.
We should've sent drawings back in that addressed that.
Okay. And then the, the other item, there was some, there's some really nice landscaping. Typically, Austin, I don't know if we included, but typically we do. It's a very comprehensively landscaped project, but we still had some foundation landscaping around the backsides of the building and, but other than that, and then there was a few remaining engineering comments. Staff didn't really feel like there was any major standout items that would prohibit this project from moving forward, so.
Anybody in the audience like to comment on this issue? It's to the commission. So, you're talking about, you said garages. Well, every, so, so not every unit will have a garage?
Not every, not every unit will have a garage. We have about ten percent.
So-
About forty, forty garages is, is about.
And there are two-car garages or one-car garage?
There are four garage units, so they're-
It's a garage unit, okay.
Yes. So, they're, they're, the buildings will have two spots on either side.
Okay. And are these?
They'll be self-contained, so I mean, when you pull in, when you pull in, you're gonna have, you know, it'll be a fully enclosed garage.
From what I understand, the development guidelines say that it has to be used for parking, correct?
That's, that's correct, yes.
So, there's no storage, there's no?
That's correct.
Okay. So, talk to me about your, your design. Are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom, a mix?
They're ones and twos. The buildings can be, although you can't tell the difference on the outside, we can pick up three one-bedrooms and put two, two bedrooms in so they can kinda mix and match. That's how we came up with the four hundred and seventy-six, which is an odd number, four hundred and seventy-six units. I think, I told Daniel I wouldn't need him, but I can't remember the exact mix. But we normally have about two-thirds, two bedrooms to a third, one-bedrooms. It's a little bit higher on this one. But that's a standard mix that we use, and, and they rent well. So, we only have ones and twos, and then there's a couple of different units, like this one that's shown here. The interior, you have the, those are all two bedrooms. And on that floor, so the, the end units have a pretty big common area, and then the bedrooms are spaced in the middle. The middle units, you have, you walk into, you know, your living room, kitchen, and then the bedrooms are down a hall. So, we have a, a mix of sizes, a mix of, even between the two bedrooms and one bedrooms, a mix of floor plans. Again, like I said, every one of these has a, a private balcony and a, and a fairly large private balcony if you look at the, at the, the floor plans. So, we, we think, we think that's gonna be very attractive. All of the porches are screen, are screened, so instead of like a picket around the outside, we actually have where people are using like a wood product turned on the side where there's gaps in there, but you can't see. So, if somebody puts their bike or something on the porch, you can't see it here. So, and you can kinda, kinda see where we have the wood, wood rails, but they're turned, they're turned horizontal where you can't see in there, so it provides a little bit more privacy and screening. And, and again, there's a mix of floor plans, a mix of ones and twos that we think that our customers, our, our tenants will, will find attractive. Then the outside of the building is gonna be a mix of stone and wood and hardy plank. So, it'll be, you know, better than seventy percent masonry exterior. I don't know that exact number. And, but it'll be a mix of materials, a mix of colors that'll, that again, fit within the southwest district overlay, but, but'll give it, you know, staff wanted us to mix the roof up, the roof lines and everything, so it gives it a good articulation when you're looking at it between materials, colors, and roof lines. This is a nice, but this will be one of the nicest department buildings anywhere in this area. This is a nice building.
Any other comments? That, you said, one other thing I had was the storm drain, or water runoff. And you said it's gonna be pushed to the north, so it's not gonna be coming down to Watkins?
It'll be going, the stormwater will run to, to the north. This is part- This is part, um.
Yeah, I think we, we started this kind of regional detention view, as, you know, Ms. Patsy would love to give the plug for the regional detention, uh, cause that's what we're comprehensively trying to go to, is to city address drainage issues on a large scale instead of having a hundred detention ponds all over the place. But, uh, yeah, this is part of a multi-project kind of area.
Yeah, we're, we've been, we've been looking at the hydrology and the drainage for this entire area and, uh, kind of off to the northwest on some of the joining property, we've, we've actually designed a series of stair-step, uh, retention ponds, which will hold water in them all the time. Uh, we've talked to the developer about even installing a well to make sure those ponds stay full. You know, in the summertime, they can kinda draw down, get nasty, get, uh, you know, algae and stuff going in them, but keeping that thing fed with a well keeps them looking nice year-round, but they will still also have the storage capacity we need for much more than just this. So, this is gonna take care of stormwater control for a large area, several, uh, hundred acres, I believe.
Any other comments? This would be a motion to approve.
Subject to staff comments.
Have a motion? We have a second, roll call.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Eighteen thirty-one. Our next item on the agenda will be R eighteen dash thirty-five Lewis and Shannon Froud, southwest corner of Interstate, or intersection of E, East Robinson and Oakmore Street from C-six to C-two, presented by Lewis or Shannon Froud. I hope I said that right.
Mike Cloughelter with Ozark Civil Engineering, here representing our client. Uh, as you stated, we're requesting a rezone of approximately point eight-nine acres, located at the corner of Oakmore Street and Highway four-twelve. Uh, requesting a rezone from C-six to C-two. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Staff comments?
This, uh, this rezoning request is, uh, southeast of town. Um, the, uh, the, uh, comprehensive land use plan indicates a, uh, commercial approach. I think it's more of a, a regional commercial. Um, and so this is, uh, it's, uh, currently zoned right now. I think it's C-six, um, for large product retail sales districts. Um, it's still in keeping with the commercial intent of, uh, the city guidelines and everything. Um, the adjacent zoning is, is very commercial as well, and, uh, ultimately, uh, staff recommends approval of this rezone.
Anybody in the audience have anything like to add to this? If not, to the commission? This would be a call.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Ms. Haney, roll call.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda will be R eighteen dash thirty-six Joel Lynn Steenbergen, parcel number eight-one-five dash three-zero-eight-three-zero dash zero-zero-zero, and number eight-one-five dash three-zero-eight-three-zero dash zero-zero-one, from A-one to C-five, presented by... You had to tell me your name.
Swetel.
Swetel?
Swetel Patel.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Swetel Patel, six-eight-five-two Freedom Place, Springdale, Arkansas, seven-two-seven-sixty.
Would you like to say anything about this?
Well, we are intending to buy this, uh, land to develop as a misuse, uh, mixed-use, uh, like, uh, office building with the retailer, the lower-end hotel, uh, for those fire-able land. Uh, there are two parcels. One is the single-family, which is a small house, and there is one, the rest of them is agriculture. So, we'd like to convert that into a C-five to...
Staff comments?
Currently, it's a, uh, it's a, uh, A-one zoning. It's a landscape business, um, and, uh, there, the area around it, directly across the room, it is Sams, like to the northeast and everything. And, uh, um, this is, this is another, uh, fast, uh, developing area that is, is quickly and, uh, and rapidly transitioning to, uh, commercial along that whole corridor as you get down to, uh, children's. Um, uh, staff took a comprehensive look at it and, uh, and, uh, ultimately, uh, recommend, uh, approval of this, uh, this rezone.
Anybody in the audience like to address this issue? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Ms. Haney, roll call.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Sorry. Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes. Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is R eighteen dash thirty-seven Ho Tran, two-zero-zero-nine North Thompson, from C-two to C-six, presented by Ho Tran.
I'm not Mr. Tran. I'm, uh, Jeff Bates with Bates and Associates, and, um, they're wanting to rezone it from C-two to C-six.
Hold on for a second, Jeff, let me check right quick.
Did you do an authorization or?
Yep. I even took a picture.
Where is it in? Is this right where, okay?
Should've been with original application.
Done this a few times.
Listen, make sure it's on the record.
Step toward the front.
There we go. All right, we got it. Sorry about that, Dan.
No, no problem. They're just wanting to put an American Car Center there. It's pretty much, there's a lot of other car lots in the areas, so it seems to fit in there.
Staff comments?
Um, the, uh, the zoning of this track is, uh, C-two general commercial district, um, which is at, uh, you know, it's very broad in the city of Springdale for retail and a, and numerous uses. Um, uh, when, uh, Ms. Patsy took a look at this, uh, for the requested, uh, C-six large product retail sales district, um, just because of the, uh, the uses that are typically provided in there, um, and, uh, because the, uh, I think the, the land use in this area indicates a lower intensity, uh, commercial use, um, she, uh, went ahead and recommended that, uh, this was not in keeping with the, um, with the intent of, uh, our, um, rezoning guidelines, so we did not recommend approval of this one, so.
Anybody in the audience like to address this issue? To the commission? So, from what I'm understanding, this, from what I read and hear, he wants to change this into a used car lot.
Yep.
How many used car lots do we have up and down that area?
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Where is?
Just on seventy-one.
Yeah.
Where is the line on the land use plan where we?
It's, uh, it's just north of there is where you have regional kinda commercial in there, and then, uh, from the south on, it's pretty much the, the lower intensity commercial from the land use.
Okay, okay. So, is that kind of the dividing line where we were saying?
Right, yeah, Randall Woby, north of Randall Woby is kinda where you start seeing it transition to a lot more intense, uh, use, so.
Well, just looking at that picture, you can see there's car lots everywhere.
Right, right, but there were a lot more car lots inside the center of the city, and the decision was made that to move them out, further out to the edges, especially the big car lots. And so then, through attrition.
Well, this is almost to the county line.
It's pretty far out there.
I mean, you know, that's what...
I'll say, uh, personally, I drove by there and, you know, the fact that the entire thing is paved and it's got three entrances, uh, one goes up on Randall Woby and then the two off of seventy-one. I mean, to me, it seems like an, an ideal place for, uh, car lot. I mean, and I, I, and I find it hard to, you know, I just, I...
But, just remember, guys, we're looking at it from a rezone, use standpoint, the full comprehensive of use, not a specific use, so.
Don't we have like a tractor sales place a little bit, um, south of that?
Uh, there, to the south, there is a landscaping, uh, company, just south, where it comes down the hill to where the Razorback Greenway comes through there. Um, I'm pretty sure that's, that's down that, um, but there are, I mean, as you can see on the aerial, there's, there's used car lots across it to the north and to the, uh, northwest, so.
So, even if, yeah, so I'll correct that, even if it's not a car lot, the title of that is, of C-six is large product retail sales. I, I just think it's, I just feel like it's, it's set up to do that well already, and...
And, and there are other lots further in that are, were set up the same way and have now been developed into more C-two type uses. And, and I think that was when we did the land use plan was to move those things out, and the ones that are inside like that are grandfathered in.
So, if this was a new, what I'm saying is if this was a new construction, maybe, project, maybe I could see that, but it's already, you know...
It was a restaurant, not a...
It was, yeah, it was, it was a restaurant.
Right.
But...
It's been two restaurants, actually.
It's been restaurants, but I don't think that there's anything about this property that disqualifies it from being large product retail sales. I mean, that's just, that's my, again, that's just my personal opinion, um...
Yeah, I, I have to agree with, with Peyton on this one. I, I, I believe if we'd come down and said, "Look, we're gonna put a brand-new Hyundai, uh, shop in here", I don't think we'd be having this conversation. It's beside a Ford dealership, it's across the street from another car dealership. If we were, if we were tearing down thirty-two homes to then go in and pave and then try and make it into something, I think that'd be a little different conversation. Once again, just my opinion, but, uh, I think on this one, it makes sense.
Well, and the location, just right next to them is an automotive repair shop or tire shop, you know, right there.
Yeah, I think that's a, uh...
Tire tracks.
Tire tracks.
Yeah, just to the south of there.
Any other comments? Be a, this would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Covert, roll call.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
No.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Passes seven-one.
Thank you very much.
Get the standard, staff will prepare the ordinance, yeah.
Next on the agenda is R eighteen dash thirty-eight Reed Trust, six-two-six-eight West Wagon Wheel Road, from A-one to RE, presented by Engineering Services Incorporated.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Asme with ESI, happy to answer any questions about this project. We've got a couple of things bundled together on this one. Um, there's a rezone, there's also a conditional use that's tied to basically a property line adjustment. So, I don't know, best way to discuss it.
Staff comments?
Yeah, as he was stating, uh, they approached us and, uh, um, they wanted to rezone a section of this. This is, uh, if you've driven out on this road, it's Wagon Wheel. It's a, it's a beautiful portion of Wagon Wheel. Um, it's currently zoned A-one. Um, it's right on a section line, so typically, uh, they have kind of a weird parcel kinda going through the middle, but there's a wonderful house up in the front, and, uh, she wanted to keep a portion of that and go ahead and see if she could sell off the other portion. And, uh, you know, um, so from what we're hearing today, she asked to rezone that small section in the front, uh, to a one-acre little parcel, which was in keeping with, uh, residential estates, and, uh, you know, staff ultimately approves that, so.
Anybody in the audience have anything, any concerns to this issue? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Are we doing the rezoning first?
Yes, this, this is for the rezoning. This is just for the rezoning, then we'll take the other issues.
Okay, we're rezoning the whole property or just the section?
Just the red highlighted portion, you know, it's always kinda weird. Uh, we did get a, we got an example plat that they brought us to kinda, to show the section, and I think we have it, uh, in the next couple of slides. It's just, um, they're also asking for a conditional use tandem lot use, and they, you know, if they couldn't get the rezone, there's kinda, it's just one of those things where they're like, hey, hear that one first.
I see, okay, yeah, 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 gotcha.
Just get a little procedure there, yeah.
Do we have a call?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, roll call, please.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. We're gonna skip down and continue. We'll go to C eighteen dash twenty-five and LS eighteen dash twenty-eight Betty Reed, eight-two-six-eight West Wagon Wheel Road tandem lot split, presented by Engineering Services Incorporated.
So, on this one, it's two separate properties, and there's an existing tandem lot that has zero access, no access easement, no legal access to the public right-of-way. And so, we're maintaining that tandem lot, but we're going to give it fifty foot of right-of-way at the front. We're just changing the shape, and we're taking two roughly equal-sized properties. The back one is the tandem lot, we're expanding it and giving it fifty foot of public right-of-way. So, it will still be technically a tandem lot, cause it doesn't have the full hundred foot by code you're supposed to have, but it does have access, whereas right now, it doesn't. So, we still need a conditional use to be able to do the property line adjustment.
Staff comments?
As, as the applicant stated, you know, they wanted to separate the, the one-acre tract off, which didn't leave enough frontage for the large track in the back. As you can see, it's around fourteen acres there, or, uh, yeah, around that. And, uh, so, um, in doing that, with working with them, they're like, um, we, we can do about fifty foot of frontage. And I was like, okay, well, the requirement still is, because you're not gonna meet an A-one zoning, two-hundred-foot frontage requirement, you gotta go to the planning commission, ask for a tandem lot. So, that's what's kinda got us to this point, and, uh, um, and they were able to get to a fifty-foot frontage, which, from a development standpoint, uh, I mean, that's, that's still enough adequate frontage if they wanted to get a road back there for fire access and, uh, you know, as long as it was IFC requirements paved and everything of that nature, so. Um, there's no road proposed on this, which we typically see a house already developing back there, so there would be a paving requirement with that. That won't come in till later, and will be dependent upon the development, actually.
Okay. Any comments from the audience on this? To the commission? And, um, I think we could take both these at the same time, if that's the wishes of the commission. This would be a call for the vote for both.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote for both, Mr. Covert, roll call.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Please pass eight zero.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda will be, uh, public hearing, conditional use. Will be C eighteen dash twenty-three Beautiful Hope Baptist Church, two-one-one-two West Huntsville Avenue, use unit forty-two, church synagogue, and a C-two, presented by Joel Hernandez.
Good evening. My name is Joel Hernandez, uh, residence is fourteen ninety-eight Council Drive. We're here to ask for a conditional use permit of the property over Mathias Properties.
Staff comments?
So, and, uh, this is, uh, anytime they come before us with a conditional use on a current site, um, for a church and everything, we have to do kind of a site plan analysis, and, uh, as you heard from Ms. Patsy many a times, um, she evaluates it on a few level, uh, items. Um, one being the ingress and egress, it was acceptable. Um, the, uh, the refuse and service areas kinda circulation is acceptable, and, uh, um, the yard requirements and the size and shape of the sides, kinda just a nice little rectangular lot. It's already, it's already updated, uh, the parking lot's in good condition, um, and there's actually some landscaping out front, and, uh, so, um, there really just weren't any, uh, glaring concerns from that. Um, uh, she puts the standard here, it's like, well, you know, you gotta meet the sound ordinance and always comply with building and fire codes, um, that nature, and then, uh, I think you listed your worship hours, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Yeah, so from five to P, five PM to eight-thirty on Sa, Wednesday, Friday, Wednesday through Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday, it's eight to five, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Anybody in the audience, uh, have any concerns of this issue? Uh, to the commission?
Um, so their parking was sufficient, did you have that?
Yeah, I mean, she, there wasn't any concerns that, uh, you know, that she, she rose to me at this, at this time, and it...
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Ms. Haney, roll call.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Thank you.
Welcome. Uh, next on our agenda, C eighteen dash twenty-four, Stone Mill Bread, one-twenty Graham, Use Unit forty-four, mobile vending in downtown, Form Base Co., Downtown Neighborhood Center Type One, presented by Derek Gibson.
Derek couldn't be here today, so I'm the property owner at one-twenty Graham, uh, Mark Henry, two-six-two-five South Barrington, Springdale. Uh, we're asking for a conditional use so that Stone Mill Bakery can operate a mobile food truck on our property downtown. Uh, we feel like it's, we're, we're trying to bring some food downtown. He's a, uh, Stone Mill Dan is a, is a, operates a business here in Springdale. He's just got a brand new, uh, really nice truck. Uh, we're, we're trying to, uh, to bring some of that, uh, as a cornerstone downtown before we develop.
You didn't like bring samples of that or anything, did you?
He did, in the trunk of his truck out there. He's happy to bring some in.
Staff comments?
Um, as per, uh, our conditional use guidelines, we have to evaluate it on a site plant standpoint. Uh, Austin, can she just kinda show you the location of where this is gonna go? I mean, it's tucked in an alley there. Um, it's actually off to the side of the alley, so the ingress and, uh, ingress is, uh, is, is adequate. I mean, there's really, the only traffic is coming off of that road to the west, and, uh, pretty, uh, pretty, uh, acceptable location, uh, in proximity to, um, Tyson's Food and, uh, a, a lot of our downtown businesses, you know, we have that, that gap that need to fill this in, so, um, there really weren't any concerns from staff, uh, on the, the location of this food truck.
Anybody in the audience would like to, uh, address this issue? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. By Ms. Haney, roll call.
Parker?
Oh, yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes, ma'am.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero. We're ready. Next on our agenda will be a large scale development. It'll be L eighteen dash twenty-nine, Safe Keeper Storage, five-seven-one Oak Grove, uh, Oak Grove Road, presented by DCI. And I need to apologize, I should've had you come up when we did your rezoning, and I apologize for that, so.
No, I came up.
Okay.
I'm Leslie Tabor with DCI, here to answer any questions. Um, I was looking through the comments, there was a particular comment about, um, road improvements, and we would like to discuss during the meeting tonight about paying money in lieu of. I don't think that was something that came through in our plans, that that's what we would like to, to do, um, as there's no development north or south of us, and we are planning on putting in a sidewalk. Um, we would like to go ahead and pay money in lieu of the street widening and curbing gutter.
Staff comments?
Um, I'm gonna run over the comments real quick, and then we'll, we'll see if we can get that. Um, this is, uh, with the rezone we had earlier, this is on the, uh, west side of town, um, close to, kinda bor, borders Elm Springs on the left where the road is, and kinda on the south. There's a residence to the north and to the south as well, so, you know, we have that increased screening requirement that will be, uh, required for that eight foot screening fence, uh, whenever there's a residential use adjacent to a commercial. Um, uh, the, uh, the only really comments we had is that, you know, the, uh, the building exteriors do, do have a lot of, you know, metal siding. I, I'm all for metal siding, as long as it has the architectural ribs and everything of the nature, it's just, in our, um, commercial design standards, it can't be the majority, like the, the most predominant material, so that comment is, uh, still on there. They did provide, um, some elevation changes, which is tough for a storage building to meet our hundred foot requirement, so they gave it a little bit of a gable, and then had some, uh, some cornices and like a, um, um, some, some elevation changes in the roof line, so they did, uh, that's pretty tough for a storage facility to meet that. Um, there were, um, a multitude of engineering comments, and I'll, I'll defer to Carl since he is here in the audience, if there are any concerns from the planning commission, since he is the expert on that, so if y'all have any concerns, but, uh, um, that is, uh, staff's just been working with them to get through this, uh, our development process, so.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this issue? That's to the commission. Carl, you have anything you wanna add on this? She's talking about not improving, uh, the road. Does, what does engineering say about that?
Uh, I didn't make the comments on the road improvements, but, I mean, we're okay with that, y'all okay with that?
Is that portion in Elm Springs on the road?
I don't believe it is.
Sarah, did you have something you needed to add?
It's my understanding they're requesting a variance or waiver now?
Um, I think they're talking about payment in lieu of, which.
Like road widening and curbing.
Okay, I was about to say, because all we have is the large scale, so just to remind the listeners that.
Right, yeah, it wouldn't be on the agenda, yeah.
But, um, all of our other drainage comments, we'll be able to work those out.
Yeah, so there's no major concerns from engineering standpoint at this point, just work it out like normal staff comments, okay.
So. If I remember right, the, just the house down, you know, you got, you got two houses down that little lane. I think the house on the left, that little property there, I think there's still Elm Springs. I think everything around it, including the, the road, is, is Springdale.
Right. There's a little, I think there's a little section to the north on the actual road, um, and you're right, that the house, it kinda comes out and grabs that, like a little island, uh, portion there. It's really an odd portion of our city limits there.
So, the payment in lieu of, um, I mean, that's, that's gonna be a little bit different than just the sidewalk. I mean, that's, that's.
Right, I think the.
That's major, that's kinda major deal right there.
The last time we had that discussion was with the, uh, the church off of, uh, north of Walmart for the, uh, um, doing a payment in lieu of. So, I mean, we, you know, we'd have to have an estimate, and they'd have to go and get approval.
Sure, and we, we completely will work with you, whatever you need. Um, and as I said before, we are planning on constructing a sidewalk, so all that we would not be constructing and paying money in lieu of would be the street widening itself and the curb and gutter along, uh, Grove Road.
Yeah, cause they are subject to, uh, street improvements for that portion, for their portion of the road, if it's in Springdale, um, the city limits does get a little bit weird there, so.
But we're happy to, happy to meet any requirement that's necessary.
So do we have a picture of what's gonna be actually facing, um, the roadway, how it's gonna look?
Yeah, Austin, can you go to the elevations? Uh, is there another one in there, Austin, or?
There shouldn't be, an office.
May not have grabbed it. Uh, can you go to the development folder, Austin, and see if we can get it?
Um, while he's looking for that, we talked about, uh, screen fence. What, what type of fence are we planning on using?
Um, a decorative metal fence, um, in the front portion of the property, that'll be the pro, the piece of the property closest to Grove Road. Decorative metal fence along with a vegetative fence, kind of in combination, and then the rear of the site, all the way around, would be a privacy fence.
Wood, wood privacy?
A wooden privacy fence, yes. And then there, you know, our perimeter landscape requirements as well, so, be broken up with some trees.
Now, were y'all gonna pave the, uh, portion of the lot in the southeast, like where it's stored?
With gravel, um, I think at this time it's gravel. In the future, it would be paved.
What kinda storage is gonna be out there?
Um, I believe it's just for boats. Temp, temporary storage for parking and things like that.
Any vehicles gonna be parked out there?
Um, yes, any vehicles being parked out there? Probably, but we understand that, you know, there is a time limit for that to be gravelled, um.
Um, for.
There is if we establish it tonight.
Right.
Right, well, that's, that was understanding we've been operating.
So right now, we would want it paved. If there's, if there's gonna be storage of vehicles on there, we'd want it paved. Unless you bring concerns about that and you would like to ask for a, uh, a, to your delay, your delay.
Okay.
I mean, she'd have to file, you'd still have to, on that one, you'd still have to file a variance if you wanted to build insurance, so that would have to be done through a separate application.
I, I thought we did file a variance for that gravel parking area, or asked for a variance.
We don't have it on here.
That's been part of our paperwork.
Did you get anything for that, or?
I'm sorry, hello?
Did you get a variance, any kind of variance on this, or?
No. We haven't gotten, but, for the, for the parking area?
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, we, you know, I don't know if we've gotten that one yet, um, yeah, so, we'll have to address that, I guess, at a different time then.
Okay. Well, that. That's fine, we'll, we'll, we just wanna move forward.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so right now, it would be subject to staff comments?
Absolutely, yeah, and that would be one that, you know, that's just, that's an ordinance requirement where you have to, any vehicles parked on that would have to be paved, so.
Okay.
Any other comments? This would be a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, um. Roll call.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Board of Adjustments. Primito, uh, Ramos, two-two-one-one Partially Lane. Variance for deviation of incline of driveway from twenty percent to twenty-five percent, presented by Edward Regatas. I hope I got that right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, Regatas is the last name.
And your address, please?
My address is twenty-eight oh eight Route Avenue, Springdale, Arkansas.
Okay. So would you like to say anything about this?
Um, the person I'm helping out, he says that, uh, he paid somebody to do the work, so he wasn't aware of that they went over five percent, so he was just asking for a variance.
Uh, staff comments?
Is it, uh, is, how, did y'all verify that it was five percent over?
Yes.
How did y'all measure it?
Well, he didn't measure, we went to the, where we get the permits, and they told us that we were five percent over.
So we don't actually have, uh, measurement for what the actual grade is?
No. Correct.
Is this, so we are under the standing that it's twenty-two eleven, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and that's, so the one we heard earlier was just to the.
It's a little higher.
Yeah, that's a pretty flat lot. Um, the driveway's pretty flat there. Are we sure we need a variance for that one?
That's what they said.
Yeah.
Tom, do you know anything about this?
Well, I did when I went out there, I saw it, I mean.
I mean, that lot's pretty.
If his is twenty-five, then the other guy's obviously isn't twenty-five.
Right, yeah.
We don't measure, we don't measure slope, so I mean, the, the other guy had measured his at twenty-five point nine-three, this one can't be twenty-five, because it's twenty-five point nine-three.
I mean, that, this one's pretty flat.
The other one he said was twenty-seven.
I think it was twenty-five point nine-three.
He, he said twenty-seven.
No, did I? Well, the guy who told me said it was twenty-five point nine-three, so.
I mean, I.
It didn't seem like it was that high.
So, so how did this come about to come before us?
Is this, this is a house is already, people are already living in this house, yeah, so.
Already building.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't look it to me. There's, there's a big difference between that driveway and that driveway.
This is the one they're living in, right?
Yeah, this, everything already passed on this one, except, just, it's on the driveway, for some reason.
So they have a CFO, they have everything.
Right.
So, again, my question is, why, why is this coming before us?
Unless they just picked it up when they looked at the one next door and brought them both, I don't know.
That's what we're thinking, when we checked that the one on top, it must have seen this. I already can't say.
There is a house to the, uh, northeast of there that has a, quite a steep driveway.
And we haven't even paved yet.
Right, so that's not the one we're talking about though, right? Okay, so this is the one directly next to the, yeah.
Yes, sir.
He actually built a retaining wall as well. Now, I mean, in full disclosure, I mean, of course, we don't do driveways. What he's gonna get himself in trouble on is he's paved the east side of that, and you can have paved it. Soon as he parks on it, he'll be in violation of a different ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation is that we get something actually in writing showing the deviation request, that, I mean, this is, to me, just saying it's five percent is not an actual request for a deviation, that's just kinda like.
Yeah, so can we go back to the, we don't, who measures?
Right.
Who me, you, we don't, so who's doing it?
See, and that's, that's my.
So how do we know?
See, and I.
We, we, we basically are the guys when they're out there, if it, you know, if it looks like it's too steep, they will make a notation, you know, that appears that your driveway is too steep. We've never, ever had a conclusive way to measure them.
So obviously, my concern is that we just denied someone a CFO, but we don't have an official.
Measurement.
The, the guy who called me was the guy who lives in the northeast side, and his house sets at a little bit different angle. He's the one who said he worked with Kink Cox and measured it, and I could be wrong, but he said, I thought he said it was twenty-five point nine-three, but maybe it's twenty-seven.
So if we have, if we have an ordinance, why don't we measure them?
We don't inspect driveway, we've never inspected driveway.
Then why do we have an ordinance?
Don't make ordinances.
So that, that's the thing is, I mean, if, if we have something and we're not able to verify it by our city personnel.
So do we have the ability to go out and measure to tell what the grade is?
I mean, Dawn in CDBG from the planning.
Simple process.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Do we have the ability to go out and do that, Tom? Is, is there something that we, is there a party that we can hire to do that?
There probably is a product we could buy, it was, at this point, Mike's not decided to do that. We have one gentleman in my office who had a, a level that supposedly did slope, it's, it's so old and not.
Is there a third party that we could hire to go measure it if we wanted to?
You can use a rangefinder. Yeah, I always think it'd be great. They give you the slope, and it's right there on the screen frame, so.
I was gonna tell you, we do, in CDBG, we, we use a construction methodology, which is a string measurement for str, triangle measurement, so.
I think to, to the chairman's point and Peyton's point, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're going to make decisions to not set precedence and deny people a CFO, it would be nice to have the backup to why we did that, other than just speculation or perspective on, I thought it was too steep, or somebody told me it was too steep.
Every other decision that we make here is based on facts, is based on, somebody looked at us at a large scale and said there were fifty trees there, and we go based on that information, but I don't know how we can be denying people CFOs or making decisions like that if we don't even have, I just don't understand that.
But the burden is on the owner. I mean, the actual end burden, burden is on the owner.
But we're, we're, yeah, I agree.
But I still think that we have to have somebody here at City Springdale, employed by the city, that goes and verifies. We have to do that, or it's a moot point.
So on his.
How in the world we can hold it up legally if we don't have that?
So on his, I would recommend that they table that until they get some more definite information on whether he actually is a twenty-five, give or take, and then I, and then I would like someone to pursue it, and remember, if you follow up with them, to find out if there's a third party or someone we could hire that can actually tell us what is the gentleman next door's real incline. Because I don't want, I don't wanna go back and make a mistake where we deny a CFO based on the fact that we thought something.
Well, and that's kinda how staff got to this point today, we're like, we put it on a blank, we're like, we have an application, but it's like, we don't require any additional documentation at this point, and it's like, no, it's, it's a valid question, you know, like.
There may be time to update the process as well.
It puts undue pressure on this commission.
Yeah.
That we don't.
Well, the, the last one could've been thirty-two, I mean, we don't know, right? It could be twenty-seven, it could be twenty-one, or it could be thirty-one, there's just.
Whatever we might do with twenty-two eleven, does that potentially open up the door to what we've already done to twenty-two, twenty-three?
Sarah?
No.
You were basing your decision based on the representation of the property owner, so that's perfectly valid to take that on the representation. Now, if you have a reason to believe that there may be a discrepancy here, and you want to look further in it, because visually, you have a problem with that. I think that you're perfectly within your rights, and I think we're perfectly legal if you decide to do that.
So I would second Roy's motion to table this.
Would you mind if we tabled this?
Well, my question is, you know, his is a little steep, a little higher than mine.
A lot steeper than yours.
So I mean, to hold it by, based on both of these, I mean, give or take, we don't know.
We're not, we're not gonna base yours off of his.
No, what we're saying is rather than make a decision and deny something on yours, we need some more time to get the actual facts of what yours is and what his is.
Right, and, and we're not really holding anything up, cause you have a CFO, there's a person in this house, right? Yeah, so there's nothing we're holding up, so basically, it's after the fact, so.
And so if we table this, maybe it can be, it won't come before us again, y'all can handle it.
If it's a standard, yeah, it goes away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the recommendation that we're, we're giving, but we wanna make sure that you're okay with it.
So if, if it in fact is over the amount that it should be, once we figure that out, then you may not have to come back. If it is over and you need this, then you'll come back next month, and then we'll vote on it next month, but we don't wanna vote on it until we know for sure.
That's fine.
I have one more question, though, but we are certain he's been given a CFO.
We are certain he's been given a CFO when it was on, on the agenda for tonight, of course, the spelling is incorrect, so we found it, and then we were kinda shocked it would even be on there if it's already gotten a CFO. But as you look back in there, you had one inspector go out and do an inspection, and he called it saying, hey, it looks like it's too steep. He wrote five or six items down, and the last thing was to check on, on, uh, variance or slope of driveway. The next guy went out, completely different guy on a different day for a recheck, and apparently he signed everything off, and so the next CFO was issued, so.
So that's the, what I'm, that's another thing that obviously we need to think about, is that when you give a homeowner a CFO, I mean, how, are we gonna go through the city now and look at, you know, again, they have a CFO? You know, are we gonna go look at everybody's driveway now that has a CFO? I don't think that, if he has a CFO, to me, there's no.
It is pretty much a moot point at this time, because.
I don't know why he's, why he's here in the first place.
But I'll check in with Dawn, you say he's got a, he's got a, a piece of equipment?
Yeah, I mean, we, staff would, you know, we didn't come in here. Yeah, I mean, we, staff would, you know, we didn't come in here not having an explanation for it. I mean, the, the approved method or constru-, you know, construction methodology is to use a string easiest wise. And, uh, that was suggested from our community dealer, Bob Grant. We looked at it, did a little research, and that was probably the easiest methodology for doing it, so.
Sarah?
Without saying either way how I think you all should vote on this, because I back up whatever you do. Um, just you're asking, you know, why would they even bother for it if they've already gotten their certificate of occupancy? I mean, there's still other methods of recourse if there's an ordinance violation, and we, sometimes we see zoning violations in district court. So know that that's another reason why they may come forward on that, because we have another way to go about it besides the CFO.
Yeah, we, we didn't ask them to apply for this, they applied for that, so we ran through the process, you know?
I see, I see, I see. Okay, so nobody-
Yeah.
-told this gentleman he needed to come here tonight and ask for this variance?
From the planning department's understanding, no. And that's why we were like, okay, well, this will, we'll find out through education what this is, and then that will be the case.
Okay, because I, I just find it unusual that someone would come in and ask for a variance without being told by someone that they-
Well, I thought at the beginning of the conversation, he stated that somebody from the city did ask him to come here. But we don't know who that is, correct?
Yeah, we, and we, we asked that, but we didn't, we do not know at this time who that is.
Okay, but if we table it, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to-
Yeah.
-understand. Sorry.
But for the next meeting, I think there's a couple go-dos, right? There's a couple asks that we need to have the information back on. What is really Mr. Cox's incline after it's been measured by whatever technique you best believe to be one that we should use?
Right.
And then I guess why they're there, they could measure his at the same time, but once again, with a CFO already in place and someone living in the house, I don't know that it's not a moot issue.
I mean, I, you know, I'll bring whatever we need education-wise to the table, but I'll defer to, you know, Mike, obviously, because that's his department, so.
It may be worth reaching out to Mr. Cox also, who may be getting ready to file some paperwork if he believes that he needs to pursue legal action, and tell him to hold off till we get some more information for his case as well.
So, um, the consensus is, this to be tabled? Then this is tabled. Next item on the agenda will be B eighteen dash forty-three, True Love Properties LLC, parcel number eight-one-five dash two-eight-six-four-eight dash zero-zero-zero, variance for deviation of sign ordinance presented by Engineering Services Incorporated.
Daniel Asme with ESI, prepared this application, happy to answer any questions. In general, it's the old Cannon Express sign that is in existing non-conforming use, because it's taller than the current sign ordinance would allow. By right, our understanding is, there's a new tenant, he could come in and put a second sign that meets the sign ordinance. Rather than do that, we'd just like to put a second sign on the existing pole under the True Love Construction sign. That way, they get a sign that by square footage and everything meets the sign ordinance, it just happens to be attached to a sign that's already existing that's too tall under the current sign ordinance.
Staff comments?
As much as I love regulating signs or talking about signs, I defer to the building department, who is the authority of jurisdiction here.
You know, I'm definitely not there for Tom, Tom, I'm definitely not up front. All Mike is saying is, is that thing was, it's an existing sign, and it's a nonconformity, and it's all allotted as thirty feet.
So will the exist, will the new sign be placed at a height that is within the current? So I understand the poles and the whole thing is taller than what we will allow now. The new sign that's gonna be attached to that is gonna conform, correct? Or is it gonna be higher than what we allow now?
Yes, it will conform.
So the basic purpose is, we just don't wanna replace the pole, right? Poles are in place, use the existing pole, but keep the new sign at the regular height.
This is rather than placing a second standalone sign for the new tenant.
I just wanna make sure that there's nobody in the audience needed to address this issue, we didn't call for that.
Okay, and the pole is, I should, I guess I should ask this question, the pole is in good standing and not about to fall over, or, okay?
This'll be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Culver, roll call.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Parker?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Passes eight-zero. We do have one other item that was added. Division of a detached garage to a residence in a non-conforming I-one zone at one-one-two-nine Jefferson, presented by R. and O. Construction. And you'll have this letter in front of you tonight. If you'll state your name and address, please, sir.
Victor Ortiz, eleven-twenty-nine Jefferson Street.
Would you like to speak to this matter, and if you can come into the microphone and-
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, uh, I'm the property owner, and I like to actually build a, a shop for my personal use, but I wasn't aware that I had to have like special permission being where it is. And, um, we just recently bought the property, and so I'm not sure, uh, how, if I can even build anything on that land.
Okay. Staff comments?
So this is a, um, not a request that we have, I don't know, Debbie, you can have it for a while, but there is a section in our ordinance that's on non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures and things of that nature. He has a residential use in an industrial zoned district. So the residential use in itself is a non-conforming use. It's allowed to be remain, terrain, it can be rebuilt, you know, to its existing footprint, and that's the way the ordinance typically is. We usually don't see individuals come in and expand those uses. In the specific incidents, the ordinance has given the authority to the planning commission to approve whether or not they can expand this use. And, uh, you know, continue the residential use, because, um, and that, just, we don't, we just don't have these very often. Uh, but we do have some industrial zoned areas that do have residential homes in them, and they, they're well established in there and probably gonna be there for the next twenty, thirty years, so.
Anybody in the audience would like to address this issue? As to the commission, what about our fire department? Do you have any, any issues with this?
I'm gonna pull a Tom on this one, since it just came in, I don't know exactly which way it's going or anything.
Could you kinda explain on your property?
I'd like to actually, uh, set it in the back of the house, like northeast corner.
Okay, so where, where the address is on the lot, right, it's where it's gonna be put?
On the lot, it'll be, yeah.
And it's gonna be sixty-six feet deep, by thirty-six foot wide. And it's gonna be attached or detached?
No, detached.
Detached from the home?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I can add something to it, he did come in a week or so ago and he turned in his application. I know that this was owned previously by Keith Austin, and he had that as a rental property and people lived in it until it was sold. So it's been continuously lived in as a residential home. But then, once he wanted to build the, the garage, because it's zoned in I-two, that's why I had to kick him over to planning, because he has to go through here, because he wants to add to a nonconformity.
Right. Yeah, this is a new one for us, so.
So-
So I got this one right, I think.
So how far away from the house is it gonna be?
There's an existing fence already, like close to the house. I'd like to say it at least past the fence.
And, and our requirements have generally been, he has to be ten feet away from the house and still meet the setback requirements. Or if he, he could be attached, provided he doesn't cover up any egress. You know, he's saying it's detached, so we're gonna say it's ten feet, I'll leave it at that.
Yes, because I mean, around the house, he got nice big trees, so I'd like to say that it's-
Still has to meet the property, he'll still have to meet the, the setback requirements for that zone, yes.
Is the purpose of the detached building for a personal shop for you, or is it a business venture?
No, just a personal use.
Personal?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're gonna start to store cars, or like your personal?
Exactly, four-wheelers, whatever we can turn.
So, I think when, when we've had problems with something like this has been more where it's a residential zone that was being used commercially, and they put a bunch of money investment into something that could not be used as a residence.
Right. I mean, the residence is allowed to stay because it's been a residence and it's how it's being used. But because he wants to add to it, then that's where you get that thirty percent limitation of how much they can add to that, that the whole property is a nonconformity.
So, so my first question is, is from the standpoint of the legal counsel, is, does that put us at risk when it goes the other direction? Because we have, we've asked people who were going, their nonconforming use was commercial.
Right.
And they wanted to expand the commercial.
Whatever you decide to do, if you are able to justify why you believe that this is a different situation than the other one, um, just make sure you could, make a good record of that.
Okay.
I, I'm not gonna tell you how to vote either way, but it, just make a justification for it.
Okay, okay.
If, if it's the exact same thing and you don't give a reason for that, that's a little bit more difficult, but give reasons.
Okay, well, that, yeah, that's, you know, and-
Yeah, as long, as long as you make a record, yeah, you're good.
So from that standpoint, my feeling is that this is potentially a commercial location. So expanding that with a shop would be something that, you're gonna use it as personal use, but it's more in line with the area anyway versus if this was a residential area.
Yeah, it's like you're saying, on the commercial one, you're usually worried about like the impacts to around, like properties and everything.
Right, right.
And so, this one, we're more, it's more, you're like, hey, as, as a planning commission, you're like, well, we have a residence that's in an industrial zone. The city has planned for it to go, you know, land use.
A, a shop building on a street full of commercial buildings doesn't-
Correct. So, so I don't think that we're stepping on the toes of the other one. The thing that I wanna caution, no matter what it is, is that you are putting an investment into a residential home that should be, um, industrial, so if someone comes in and wants to do something industrial, they may have to take everything down. And any value of what you're putting into it is at your risk. So, so that down the road, someone doesn't come back and say, well, now it can only be this. Because realistically, if you moved out of the house for six months, you can now, is that, is that correct?
It's used for six months is one thing, it's when you're not, you can't go back to using it like it was.
Right, so if you moved out for six months, you couldn't come back as a residence anymore, and that could only be used as an industrial, so.
And I hate to, I hate to add things, and I'm gonna add this, because I like to let people know everything, including this gentleman here. Directly across the street is an old silo that is coming down. I've already been in contact with the demolition company, I believe it's still owned by Tyson, the property, isn't it?
Cargill.
Or Cargill, Cargill owns it, but that is coming down. And obviously, that is probably zoned industrial also, so it'll probably be an industrial development going there. The property to the north is on my condemnation list, and it'll probably go before the council sometime next year, because very little activities occurred there in seven years. Most of the stuff that's down, as you curve around there in front of Triple T's Foods, has been acquired by Triple T's Food and removed with the exception of two houses, one on that immediate corner and one on the entryway into Triple T Foods. The rest of those houses they show there now are all gone. And I've also heard that I thought Jefferson was gonna get improved. So that's what he needs to make sure, he wants to put that investment where you're saying, because he might not want to.
Right, right, so. So, you know, I just want you upfront to know that you're putting investment in an industrial zone that may or may not be compatible with an industrial zone, and if you have to turn around and sell it, you could lose everything you've put into that. And, and so, giving you that notice here, you can't come back later and say-
Yeah, that's fine, as long as I'm aware of everything.
Right, right, and, you know, and same thing, that you can't move out of it for six months and then move back in, so.
And these are evaluated on a specific case-by-case basis, that's straight out of the ordinance, like it's not a precedence. Each one is gonna be, have its own merits on its own and be different approach and everything else, so.
Okay.
Fire department's last, well, fire department comment on it is, is if it did go to commercial, then basically that building would have to be brought up to commercial standards with asphalt and hydrants and things like that that may not already be existing. So that's something else he needs to know, that if he goes, tries to, tries to sell it for commercial, that building was built under the current code, but it was a residential private use, if it goes to commercial, it'll have to go with what the code says at the time.
That's, that's good to know.
Right, so basically what your investment's gonna be, if it doesn't, if you in the future have any kind of idea or plan of that, like you were saying, then-
Have to invest more to bring it up to commercial.
Right, just as a cautionary.
So, yeah, and so it may be something you wanna look into before you start spending.
Or find a buyer that simply wants to scrape the entire property and build something completely different.
As long as you, key is, as long as you do what you say you're doing right now, you're good.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I mean, that's a good piece of land that I like, it's close to our family. So I'm good with building what I, I want, like, what I'm asking for. I don't see, even with all the commercial buildings, uh, being built around it, still don't see any problems.
Never say never.
Well, I mean, I still don't see any problems now. And I'm aware of everything now, at least. Like you said, I've, if any, I'll have to make a bigger investment later. Down the road, so bring it up to go.
It's refreshing coming before.
Yeah.
And that'll, it's very refreshing, thank you very much. This'll be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Hank. Mr. Culver?
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes. Passes eight-zero.
So you'll, you'll, if we have your address on, if I, I'll be sending you a letter that shows that you were approved to, uh, expand the residential use based on the planning commission's vote for what you had proposed at this meeting for that alone.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Planning Director's report?
So, uh, I think last time we had work session, um, we had discussed the subdivision on the northwest side. And, uh, we really didn't get time to go over our food trucks. And then, uh, also, I think we had another, uh, item to kinda discuss or talk about, and that was our, you know, small cell technology is getting kinda big in this area, all the other cities are having to deal with it. And, uh, um, so they, for the next work session, I think we have it planned on, um, later in October. Yeah, so I'm, I'm, uh, you know, Patsy will probably wanna continue that discussion over the, the food trucks and, uh, that ordinance and, uh, the food truck parks more specifically. Um, and I think that's pretty much it, so.
Sixteenth?
Uh, October fifteenth.
Sixteenth? Sixteenth is a Tuesday.
Let me look.
Sixteenth's a Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at Monday, it would be the sixteenth, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there anything, I mean, is there anything else you guys would like to talk about at the work session that's kind of of interest? I mean, I don't know, uh, 'cause Patsy's been out for a little while right now, and so, but I do know the food truck park was one of them. And, uh, there's been a few things mentioned tonight that I'll probably pull together. And, uh, I had promised you guys some documents on PUDs as well, so I have put together some APA best practices for PUDs for just you guys to kinda look at, so.
ADUs, if we don't, if, you know, at some point, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but I don't, I'd look this week to try to see if we had a, a-
Yeah, right now, the, so if you don't know what he's talking about, is that ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. It's a very good option for combating, um, uh, cost expense in housing. So affordable options for affordability, most cities, uh, that are looking for to offset the increased cost of housing and affordability have looked at these as ordinance. We have it as an availability down in our form-based code, meeting certain guidelines. That's about the only section you can get it. You can do it on large lots, very large lots, where you have enough frontage to like act like you were gonna subdivide them, but they're still very difficult, um, to do, so.
So like apartments over garages and different things like that, that we don't, we don't have a, outside of downtown, we don't have anything-
No.
-regulating it, authorizing it, or anything like that, and so-
It's controlled, pretty much you're not allowed in the current zone.
Right, okay, yeah.
With very minimal circumstan-, there are very few cases where it can be approved. I've probably gotten two done on very large estate lots that meet the criteria. And the other ones are only in downtown form-based code. It's something I'm very familiar with, um, we've had it in cities that I've worked at before, and it's, it's always keyed on as an affordability kinda thing. Uh, but it does come with good oversight and regulation.
Right, right.
Because the proximity is-
I just thought it might be a topic for us to-
Okay.
-talk about together.
Also, uh, we've been working on our housing standard designs, we're still working on that. We had a good meeting last month, um, had some representation from, uh, Ross Coleman Company. I believe we're gonna have another one on the twenty-fifth, I'm not firm on that date, but I think the twenty-fifth's gonna be our next meeting. We have encouraged other builders to come in besides just Ross Coleman, and we hope that we will have that. We have added some things to our housing standard designs. We have had, uh, I believe the planning department has looked at different types of siding, vinyl siding. And there are different grades of siding that they've looked at, and that's very encouraging. Uh, but I really truly feel we need to really jump on this, and I would like to, um, have this really something go to the, uh, city council by January. That would kinda give us a good target to go to, so we still got a few months. That's still give an opportunity for other builders to come in, give us their ideas. But I really think that we need to, we need to start nailing this thing down. We've already heard from one entity, we need to hear from the other entities, hopefully they'll come in. And, uh, then we can take this to the council and, uh, for their approval. and, uh, then we can take us to the council and, uh, for their approval.
We need not to forget about the northwest corridor. It's, it's gonna grow, and we're gonna need to, we're gonna have to do something about it.
Yep. So, uh, if, if, if you talk to Patsy, and if y'all could get a firm date on this, I believe it is the twenty-fifth, uh, for the housing standard design.
You know what the time is?
It's been at five-thirty. Uh, the last ones have been at five-thirty.
I'll just circle with Patsy tomorrow morning, first saying we, we're gonna recap in the morning anyways, and we'll go ahead and get something out to you guys as soon as possible with like what we had talked, and kinda start putting together, um, you know, if it's on.
Well, that's, that was tentatively, because we were looking at different, and so we told, uh, the committee that joined us, it, tentatively on the twenty-fifth. Any other issues we need to talk about tonight? Movement that we adjourned? Is that okay? Let's adjourn.